Johnny, I'm up.
There we go. Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I am going to call the Board of Education Finance Committee meeting of December 4th, 2023, the order at 4:31 PM. We have a number of presentations today. So I'll first say the board members who are in attendance, Ms. Martin, Ms. Schwartz, Ms. Kerr, myself, Melissa Owens, and we also have up at the board table, Ms. Olson and Dr. Johnson. And presenting first, we have Dr. Anne Williams and Dr. Frank Williams. And we also have Mr. George, I believe, and Ms. Darnell from RSM. Oh, Dr. Williams or Dr. Williams, I'll head it over to one of you.
Awesome. Good evening, everyone. This year, the auditors will be with us remotely tonight and in person on December 18th to present our audit results. There was a delay this year due to a new GASB requirement that they will provide insight on. So with that, I will turn it over to RSM.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, great. Thanks for, thanks for allowing us to call and appreciate giving the opportunity here to give you a status update for the June 30, 23 audit here. Just wanted to take this opportunity, we're going to talk through the process this year, where we are at a date, and then a couple of the open areas, and obviously throughout the whole process, answering any of your questions. So please feel free to interrupt us or hop in as we're going. That's the purpose here is make sure that we're getting all your questions answered. I'm going to touch on our team first and our timeline, and then we'll talk about a few of the open items, and then I'll kick it over to Sarah to touch on just where we're at so far with the audit. As far as some results, from a team perspective, consistent team for the most part with prior years, myself as the audit partner, John George, Sarah Darnell, who's on a call with me as senior manager. She's, Sarah's been on the engagement for a number of years with me as well. And then Natalia Turekka is our senior associate. She's been running the day-to-day operations of the engagement. And then Thomas Klein was an associate. Natalio's again consistent from the prior year, and Thomas was new to engagement, but associate that has been supporting Natalia. From a timeline perspective, again, similar to prior years, we decided, we started internally as a team, the RSM team, with our internal planning, looking at risk assessments, areas of focus. In July, early August, we did, we scheduled our preliminary field work at the end of August into the first week of September, and preliminary field works where again, we do a lot of our planning with management, reviewing the board minutes, updating of internal controls around significant transaction cycles and significant account balances, and then performing some of the test controls around those transaction cycles and account balances and processes. And then our final field work has been, was scheduled from the end of September through mid-November, and we had a few wrap-up weeks last week, this week, and we're continuing again to work through some of the open items as. And mentioned, a significant component this year is the implementation of GASB 96, which is a new pronouncement. It's the subscription-based information technology assignment, SABITAS. We like acronyms for everything in public accounting, and SABITAS is the acronym for subscription-based information technology arrangements. And what this is doing, similar to GASB 87 with our leases last year, where we had to capitalize leases. We capitalized an asset for the right to use a lease and then the liability for the future payments. We have that same process this year for subscription-based information technology arrangements. So all of our arrangements related to software and technology utilization. So the calculation and computation of that is a significant undertaking. So working through with management around that to get their arms around that information. So between that pronouncement, as well as some district, you know, staffing, turnover, we're still in the process of working through those, that testing. We have not completed the testing of GASB 96. Management is working through that. They've, they've utilized a tool called debt books. That's a tool that's helping your team pull that information together. And then from an audit perspective, we're testing the information in there to ensure that the balances that management's calculating and reporting in their financial statements is accurate. So we're working through that. In addition, we're working through some single audit testing relative to the ESSER program and the IDEA program. So that's an update of where we've been and where we are right now. And I'll turn it over to Sarah, and she can get into a little bit more around some of the audit areas that we've, you know, covered, journal entries and other areas that we've, we've got to through this point in time.
Okay. And yeah, and also just to kind of clarify too, I know John was mentioning, you know, 87 leases, similar to last year. Last year, you know, the district didn't actually have any agreements that qualified as leases under GASB 87. So it's definitely a lot different this year for management because there are actually agreements that they have to go through and do the calculations, which, you know, some clients had it a little bit easier because 96 is basically the same as 87, just for different agreements. This year, it's basically totally new to the district because they didn't have to do it last year because there is nothing that met the requirement of a lease under the 87.
And truthfully, I mean, it may come that, come down to an immaterial calculation as well for the district, right? But you got to go through the process of making a calcula, of reviewing your agreements and making a calculation to determine whether it's material or not, right? So still going through that process for the SABITA arrangements. So yeah, thanks, sir. Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah. And then also too, the district did upload that population and calculation like half an hour, an hour ago. So it looks like what's going to happen after we tested, assuming we're going to start testing this number now, but assuming that there are no changes, the adjustment is like 11.3 million to 11.3 million. And what that's doing, it's increasing the capital assets on your government-wide statements by 11.3, and it's also increasing liabilities. And that's like basically the opening adjustment to the 630, 2022 balances. Those both net together, so there's no impact on your net position as of 630, 22. But going forward, the subscription asset is going to be amortized like your capital assets. And so you're going to see more depreciation expense, and you're going to see that liability also coming down like normal debt payments. So that's what's really, when you see the draft statements, when they come through, you're going to see a lot more activity that's basically going to look like you have a lot more debt. But it's just those subscription liabilities now that are going to be treated as if they were normal debt issuances. Um, just kind of going through a recap of, you know, the audit, you know, process and where we're at right now. I mean, basically those areas, the SABITAS, and doing the allowable cost for the single audit are the items that need to be wrapped up before we can release the financial audit. You know, other areas, you know, payroll expense, grant revenue, cash investments. Those areas have all been completed by staff and are just going through final review processes now. You know, in relation to that, there were a few audit adjustments that we went through, you know, during that testing, you know, the district had a new debt issuance refunding this year. There was a slight adjustment there to increase expenses and other operating income in the debt service fund by 97,000. And that's just because the original entry recorded for the debt refunding, net it the, because the bonds, when the, when you sell the bonds, the person, you know, gives you the net amount, they keep back the amount that they paid to issue the debt. On the district side, though, those amounts should be recorded gross. So instead of recording the amount you receive as cash, you should record, okay, the bonds were sold, or you know, the 12.2 million versus, you know, the 12.1 that you actually received. There was also another adjustment for the investments. So over the last, you know, kind of starting last year, the district just started to venture out into more interesting investments. Usually you used to just kind of hold CDs. Now you have a lot more, you know, treasury bonds, agency bonds, corporate debt. All of those items need to be marked to fair value under GASB standards, whereas in the past with the CDs, that didn't need to occur. So this year, that entry to record the fair value didn't get recorded. On, you know, didn't get recorded until we started testing the balance. Once that entry was recorded, and then also the entry for accrued interest for the new investment account. So the district has always had the PMA investment account, or it's had it for forever, as long as I can remember. But this year, the district opened a fifth-third investment account, which is a substantial investment account and holds most of the, you know, the bonds and stuff that the district now holds. The accrued interest was not, was not recorded for the fifth-third account, but it was for the PMA account. And so once those adjustments were flown through, investment income increased by 2.5 million. And that's, so that's increasing the investment income. And then also that amount was then transferred to the operation and maintenance fund because the board signed a resolution back in June saying all investment income and the working cash fund will be transferred over to the operations fund. Other than that, I mean, nothing really, you know, significant, kind of going through with the district, the main changes that you'll see in balances, when you see the draft financial statements, are basically going to be due to your pension and OPEP accounts like always. One thing of note, you know, the IMRF fund, you've had a net pension asset for the last, you know, two or three years, I believe, this year has finally swung back to being a liability. And that's due to investment income this year, or at least during the year that IMRF is being accounted for because they're on a calendar year basis. Investment income was a net loss this year, where for the past, I think, four or five years, it's been a gain. So that's why you have a liability now with IMRF. Kind of countering that, the THIS liability that the district has recorded will also is also, has decreased substantially since last year. And that decrease is due to differences in the actual experience that THIS has seen with claims, the claims coming in have been lower than they expected. And so they revised their expectations for going forward. And all of these amounts are kind of, your liabilities are going down, but it's not always hitting straight. Your expenses and income, they're going into deferred inflows and deferred outflows and being amortized over a set period of time. So you'll see a bunch of variances and changes in the liability section and your deferred inflows and outflows. Is any questions on that or any areas you would like me to talk about or cover?
Any board members have any questions?
I have just a question. Do we see any new GASB changes coming next year that we'll have to be ready for?
Next year, I, there are, I think, a few new GASBs that are coming out, but none of them that would actually significantly impact the district. 87, last year, and 96 were like the big ones. Next year, I think it's just kind of like a few little ones. They always, there's always news of GASBs, but it's just like, how much do they actually impact you?
Thank you.
So I guess from an overall perspective, and again, open to, for more questions, but kind of, you know, turned to a summary here, you know, the quality, qualities that the priority here, making sure we've gotten through an accurate, accurate reporting on the financial statements. Obviously, it's, you know, you, the district issues a 200-something page financial report submitted in for the certificate of excellence in financial reporting through either GFOA or ASBO. Or ASBO. So ensuring that the financial information is accurate is the first, you know, priority, right? So we've gotten the, we've received the information relative to what was put into a debt book to, to, to test the SABITA calculation at 11.3 million dollar number that Sarah mentioned. Going through that testing and then our reviews, and then having the district enough time, allowing the district enough time to review the financial statements that are, that are drafted. I think we want, we just want to make sure, I, I know that the 18th is a target for the board meeting. Assuming that we can get through our testing without any issues and making sure that we can get through our reviews. I, realistically, we can have a draft for that meeting, but not likely that we'd be issuing final reports for that meeting. So again, we just want to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's, giving everybody a chance to review the report and, and us to complete our testing. And, and, and we haven't been able to do that yet, but so I just want to make sure expectations are leveled. Our priority again is quality and making sure we get, we, we, we issue a good report here. So we'll coordinate, we've been communicating with Frank and the team weekly and recently more frequently with, with Anne as some of the delays have popped up here. But we'll continue to communicate with your management team towards that, the deadline towards completion. And again, if, if we can make a, the 18th, I would, I would say anticipation would be a draft and not finals.
Mr. George, we, our board packets go out the Thursday before the board meeting. So the expectation would be that we would have a draft at minimum by the Thursday before the 18th. I don't have a calendar in front of me, but.
So that would be the 14th. Again, that's, you know, a week, I, I can't commit to that. Again, we haven't, we haven't tested the balance yet. We, like Sarah said, we received some of that detail today. So I, I'd say we'll, we'll do everything we can, but I just can't commit to, commit to that, having not performed the testing yet, right? So we'll just communicate as we go, and if, if, if that timeline isn't realistic for a draft by that point even for just a draft, right? Then we'll just make sure everybody's aware of that, so we can then target the following meeting, if that makes sense.
With that in mind, can you please speak to the board as it relates to the requirements to have the audit submitted to the state by the 15th of December?
Yeah, so the State Board of Education has filing deadlines. The initial filing deadline for the annual financial report is October 15th. We've extended beyond October 15th. There's a second filing deadline of November 15th. And we, we, we went into the audit as we have in the past, in prior years, most accrual districts, full accrual districts because of the modified accrual basis of accounting, measurable and available criteria, it's hard, you know, to, for districts to get that 60-day window of revenue recognition after year-end. It's hard for districts to get the financial information they need to be able to calculate those accruals in time for an October 15th issuance. So the, the primary target for accrual districts like U46 is November 15th. So historically, we've targeted November 15th. I think last year we filed by December 15th. December 15th is the final due date. Districts go beyond that, obviously for reasons like pronouncement changes, turnover and staffing. There's a wide array of, of issues that, that come up, and I'm sure in the past, and we've been at that point with, with U46 as well. But there, there are no extensions beyond December 15th with the State Board of Education. But there, that's a, that's a process, right? They don't issue extensions beyond December 15th. So what's the, what's the reason, the ramifications of that? Communication from the district to the state board as to their expected timelines, what the issues have been, communications with the auditors. We've been in that position in the past where, and with a number of clients, where we're communicating with the state board that we're working through issues, we're working through adoptions. And this is our projected timeline, whether that's January, February, we've had districts that issue in March. We obviously, we don't want to be in that position, but communications with the State Board of Education on where we're at with the process. So December 15th is the last deadline. Districts go beyond that, but there is no formal extension approval process with the State Board of Education, just communication. So we would need to just communicate with the State Board of Education and let them know where we're at. And same for both on the audit side as well as the district side.
Okay. Board members have any additional questions? So I, one question. I understand that there is no further extension process after December 15th. I just want to clarify that there's no ramifications as far as fines that would be levied or, you know, some, some type of effect to our financial rating from ISB that would result in the audit being delayed substantially?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great, great question. There, there, depending on the, on the extent of the delays, right? So if, if you go well beyond even at the end of January's, where, where the, the State Board of Education's compiling all the annual financial report to put together their, their, the annual report card, right, for the state. So if it goes beyond the end of January, then there is potential for the State Board of Education withhold grant funds or distribution of grant dollars. So we don't anticipate that. Obviously, we're getting to that point. Again, with, with, not with U46, with other clients, we've had clients that have gone for various reasons beyond January. And again, communication, I haven't seen that happen, where they withheld funds. But again, communication's a critical component of that, both, you know, consistent communication between the auditors and management with the state board. So don't anticipate us getting into that point. I think we're here looking at whether or not we can get to the December 14th timeline for a draft in December 18th. But I, I would say by the end of December, at the latest, if not early January, if, again, assuming that we're getting through our testing. So again, I think communication with your team and, and on the process is key here, and then just communication with state board.
So assuming, I mean, you know, best case scenario, we get the draft by the 14th so that we can present it at the meeting on the 18th. And we have board meetings scheduled on the, on January 8th and January 22nd.
Yeah.
So I'm going to ask, you know, both Mr. George and Dr. Frank, or Dr. Williams and Dr. Williams, is it, is it realistic then that we can file the audit before the end of January?
I would say that it is certainly realistic because we should have a draft before the end of December. So that we can definitely have that filed, I would think, no later than January 15th.
Yeah, I would agree. I think, you know, again, from a quality perspective, we, you know, we can get through, we've got to get through the testing, right? But then it's also just reviews, right? It's Sarah's review of the financial statements, my review of the financial statements, but then we also have a quality control review that happens. And then obviously the timing for management to review. Again, it's, you know, updating of transmitted letters, updating of all the management discussion analysis, that, that process is working through that. But, you know, again, just allowing that time. I, I don't, I don't perceive that being an issue with any January meetings. Again, we're going to push as hard as we can to get it done as soon as possible. But I just, you know, and we'll communicate with management as we go. But no, I wouldn't anticipate that being an issue in January, but hopefully it's sooner.
And I will certainly keep the board abreast of when we receive the draft and what timeline we're looking at upon receipt.
Okay. So we have only one scheduled meeting date in January, which is the 22nd.
That January 8th is an option.
It's optional, which we, we could choose, with the direction from the board, could choose to utilize, certainly for this instance. January 15th is Dr. Martin Luther King Day, and the 29th is, is not a board nor an optional date. So those are our two, our two options for the month of January. And we, we need to, that, that has to be.
Yeah. Yeah. And I will reach out to the state tomorrow to, to receive some additional guidance directly from them as it relates to your questions and concerns.
I guess just from a clarification perspective, historically, and Sarah, you can weigh in here, I think, or anyone on the board, I guess, Sue, if, I, I don't recall if, in the past, if we've presented, we've presented final reports at the board meeting in the past, correct?
We've always reported drafts, and then they went final. Other boards, though, we have presented the actual final drafts. Like it's been dated and issued, and then we present it, the final versions at the board meeting. At the district, though, we've always presented like a final draft, and it's usually been dated that day or the day after.
Okay. Yeah, which is, which is a best practice, right? A best practice would be to have the draft reviewed. But I guess my question was, the point was, if, if it were finals that we were presenting, if that were in January, we could final the file with the State Board of Education prior to that board meeting if they're finalized. But so again, we'll, we'll move forward with completion and, and communication and shouldn't be any issue from a January date, but hopefully sooner.
Okay. Thank you, both Mr. George and Ms. Darnell for your presentation.
Thank you.
From you again.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, the next item on the agenda is update on Unite U46 Initiative Funding Plan. Yes. And I think so, in addition to Dr. Anne Williams at the dais, we also have Ms. Hennessy from Raymond James.
Hello. Good afternoon.
I was just going to say, Ms. Hennessy is here with us again, this time to provide an overview of our underwriting plan as it relates to our first issuance of referendum bonds. I am pleased to report that our plan includes opportunities to collaborate with the businesses in our communities and potentially minority and women-owned businesses. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hennessy to provide a little bit more detail on our plan.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. So just a quick market update. I will just mention that this page two is outdated because our market is moving really fast, but in a good direction. Between November 1 and December 1, we have seen interest rates come down 80 basis points in many years. So that crazy run-up we had in September, October is kind of reversing itself upon expectations that the Fed is done raising rates. And some, some are thinking may even start to reduce rates in the spring. So that's good news there. The next page represents one of the options that we've been looking at, including the first issue of 62 million of the referendum-approved bonds. It's shown in the highlighted yellow bars. So you can see it's going to stabilize the debt service tax rate at the exact same amount as was levied in '22, per the promise to the community through Unite 46. And it's going to be paid off through 2034 levy year. So when we issue bonds, let's go to the next page. We, there's really three types of sales, negotiated, competitive, and a private placement. We did the private placements a year ago. The district just closed on those last week. Very successful forward private placement of refunding bonds. So one of the wonderful things about a negotiated sale in the case of a referendum approval is that you can offer bonds to local community, individual investors throughout Elgin and the U46 boundaries through a negotiated sale. That is impossible to do in a competitive sale. The district's done both of those types of sales over the years. So what we may do to kind of give back to the community that supported Unite 46 in terms of the referendum is to advertise locally in the newspaper and on the district's website, allow bonds. allow bonds available to individuals who are interested in purchasing them, have the ability to do that and get their orders fulfilled because those orders would be a priority for the underwriter. Okay, so that kind of priority can't be set any other way than through a negotiated sale. So it's a way to really give back to the community that supported the referendum. So the district needs to determine an underwriter or underwriters and can target those who specialize in selling bonds to local retail investors, as well as including minority underwriting firms that reflect the makeup of the community as well. So we're suggesting to go forward with a request for proposal for underwriter to find those that would really excel in, in that way.
Ms. Hennessy, can I interrupt you just real quick? Does it make a difference that this presentation isn't showing on Zoom?
Oh, oh, sorry.
Because we are broadcasting this, right? So it should be.
I have to share my screen here.
Yeah. No, maybe not.
Nope, no, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry to interrupt.
No problem. So we envision going out for requests for proposal for underwriters that will specialize in the local retail distribution, as well as we mentioned, reflecting the community and looking at minority underwriting firms as well. A negotiated sale is very appropriate in this market, given the volatility in the interest rates that we've seen. And the reason for that is that in a negotiated sale, you are not married to one sale date. We are targeting a sale date around that first week of January. But we, if something goes wrong in the market, we have the ability to reset that sale date to a calmer market conditions within the next week or so. So contrasted with a competitive sale, you know, you can't target retail investors. It primarily goes to institutional. And there is no, say, in the underwriter decision in a competitive sale. And then also the sale date is set and not is flexible in a negotiated sale. So that's why we're recommending following this path with a negotiated sale. Any questions? So just the last page is an update on our review where we are to date. We've had meetings October through November twentieth, including the first and second reading of the parameters resolution. So tonight, we're talking about the method of sale for the bond issue. I know you're also going to discuss fund balance policy tonight. On December thirteenth, we will review the bond rating presentation. And on December fifteenth, make that rating presentation over Zoom to Standard and Poor's. That will renew the bond rating. Then the bond parameters resolution will be presented to the board for final approval on December eighteenth. We, we intend to award, have the district award the winning underwriter or the approved underwriting team on December nineteenth. We will then sell the bonds in early January and close the bond issue no later than February of twenty twenty-four, allowing us to access that twenty-three levy.
Board members have any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, next item on the agenda is fund balance policy. It's Dr. Williams. And Dr. Williams.
Okay, so I am supposed to end this slideshow and start the next slideshow? Can everybody see it?
Yep.
I think so. Awesome, thank you.
Okay. Good evening again. We have a presentation for you tonight to discuss fund balance policy. We are not recommending changes to the policy as of today. But this discussion is primarily to inform our conversations as we continue to talk about funding the capital projects and what percentage of reserves which should be used. So on our first slide, we have our actual board policy. As you can see here, it is tied to the ending year fund balance and the revenues associated with that. We look for a fund balance of no less than twenty percent based on our operating funds as identified through the Illinois State Board of Education. And we'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. Again, when we have this conversation, keep that twenty percent number in mind, but we're not looking to make recommendations to change policy at this time. So on the next slide, it shows you the five indicators of the state's financial profile. Those indicators are fund balance to revenue ratio, expenditure to revenue ratio, days cash on hand, as well as short and long-term borrowing, borrowing. As you can see, the fund balance to revenue ratio is thirty-five percent. So it is, it is a significant portion of the overall picture. And that is the identifier that most school districts tie to their board policy relating to fund balance. So if we dive in a bit deeper into the fund balance to revenue ratio as it's defined by ISB, it is the overall indicator of financial strength. And as relates to our district, we have had the highest rating, the highest financial profile rating for at least the last ten years. And as it stands for our last evaluation by the state, we were in the top category, that being category four, with the lowest risk. So we are a good investment in that regard. I'm going to turn it over to Frank to talk a little bit about the history behind our ratio and how it has changed over the last ten years.
So now that we understand how the ISB profile comes into play with the district's board policy, let's look at the district's historical data on fund balance to revenue ratios. The chart is depict, depicting the ending fund balance and the ending fund balance percent of direct revenues. The data shown are actuals for the past ten years and unaudited actuals for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. As you can see, we have experienced substantial growth in our ratio over the past ten years. Now let's take a step back and see how we accomplish this. Back in two thousand seventeen, the new evidence-based funding model was implemented in Illinois, and the district started to see significant increases in state funding. Soon thereafter, the pandemic began and federal dollars started to flow into the districts all across the country. This combined with the decrease in expenditures during remote learning causes a substantial increase in the district's ending fund balances in recent years. While the ratio has grown, we are very, very cognizant of the, of the pending Esser Cliff and the fact that it will result in decreased revenues in the future, which will impact this ratio. We are also aware of the plan to spend a portion of the district's reserves on capital projects and on maintenance. So with all that in mind, Dr. Williams will continue the discussion by reviewing other factors to be considered when evaluating the needs for reserves.
In recent discussions relating to funding our capital projects, bond ratings were discussed. As you know, our funding plan includes using a portion of district reserves, which would impact our overall fund balance. This slide provides a summary of the bond rating categories with the district's current bond rating highlighted in yellow. A district's bond rating is similar to a person's credit score. It is an indicator of the financial condition of the potential borrower. It is a common way investors assess the risk of buying our bonds. As an example, the state of Illinois is currently at an A-three rating. But just a few years ago, when the state was at a lower point financially, it was a B-A-A-three. And that was just in the beginning of twenty twenty-one. Several factors come into play when determining bond ratings. And some of these factors include liquidity, outstanding debt and pension liabilities, the economy, a district's tax base, and financial management practices. For the bond rating, liquidity is measured by fund balance as a percentage of revenue or as a percentage of expenditure, depending on which, which rating organization is rating the firm. As an example, Standards, Standard and Poor's AA rating, Illinois School District median, is about fifty-five point four percent. This means that when you look at all Illinois school districts with an AA rating, the midpoint is fifty-five point four percent, which is substantially higher than our board policy at twenty percent and the state's highest rating at twenty-five percent or more. Now let's take a look at fund balacy, fund balance in policy and practice, not only at U forty-six, but at some of our neighboring districts. This slide provides information on fund balance policy and practice. And as you can see, the district's fund balance requirement of twenty percent is much lower than what was on hand at the end of FY twenty-two. But that is common among many of the districts listed here. In conversations with school business officials, it is worth noting that some districts are actually in the process of doing just what we're doing today, talking about their fund balance policy, how they might spend funds on capital projects, and how they might revise their policy in the future to provide a more strategic outlook on how to address fund balances. As examples, Naperville two oh three is above the range, but they're planning capital spending that will bring them closer to their range. Plainfield two oh two is actually planning to move their policy to thirty to fifty percent. And Valley View School District three sixty-five is also commit, considering amending their fund balance policy to thirty to forty percent because it is more in line with their practice and philosophy. What is not shown here is the potential impact of cash needs throughout the year. While these ratios are valuable, they are based on a point in time. It is important to remember that the fund balance at the end of the year does not provide insight on the cash needs throughout the year. As an example, our lowest point is typically in February as we receive the bulk of our revenue in June and September with Kane and DuPage County taxes. Cook County taxes are a little bit less reliable. Our needs for reserves also change during the year depending on the month. So if you consider our monthly payroll is about forty-eight million, when you consider salary and benefits, if we look at our payroll at the end of the summer, when some of those construction bills start to come in, our cash needs would be significantly higher than they might be in other months. So when you think about fund balance, it's critical that you also think about how much cash you're comfortable having on hand at any time because our money does not come in equally every month. Additional considerations, when you think about spending reserves is, are listed here. You want to ensure that you're spending reserves on one-time expenditures. You don't want to create a structural deficit by adding those dollars on to, to ongoing items like salary. You want to look at the state of the economy and the state of the state. As mentioned previously, the state of Illinois, our finances have improved, but we still have some way to go. The evidence-based funding model is not fully funded and is likely to not be fully funded for some time. You want to consider inflation and, and the, the recession that people are talking about may occur in the next few years. You want to consider the potential impact to the bond rating and to the ISB financial profile designation. So there are a lot of factors to consider as you have this discussion. On this slide, we show our existing policy and some things to consider as we move forward. What's shown in red are some talking points that we'd like to hear from the board about as it relates to what numbers they might be comfortable considering as a target fund balance. What numbers might they be comfortable considering as it relates to spending down reserves for capital projects? Is this range comfortable? These are just some of the considerations that we'd like to discuss this evening. And with that, I'll open it up to the board.
Board members have any comments or questions?
Smarten? And, and I believe this came up before, but the, so we're currently in board policy sitting at twenty percent.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe the state, we said, recommends twenty-five percent as their minimum.
Their highest category starts at twenty-five percent or higher, yes.
Okay. So we're technically per policy underneath what the state recommendation would be at this point.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Kirsten?
Oh. Sorry. Yeah, it's gone.
The twenty percent of reserves that we want, is that averaged out because you, you mentioned that every month our cash flow is different? Is it just taking a, an average for the whole year to determine what that twenty percent amount is?
No, ma'am. It is, we look at the ending fund balance on June thirtieth, and then we look at the operating revenue for the operating, the revenue for the operating funds, the education fund, the operations and maintenance fund, the transportation fund, and the working cash fund, which is, again, the savings. So it's, it's not averaged out. It is a point in time. And that's a critical component to remember as you think about days cash on hand. It varies throughout the year, and that is just a moment in time.
I guess I'll follow up with that. Do you have any idea what the ratio looks like at other times in the year? Does it get as low? I mean, currently we're at sixty-seven percent or so. Was it fifty-eight percent a few months ago, or do you not have any idea?
We did, we did an analysis and we did, we can provide some additional information relating to that, but our low point was in February.
Okay. Would it be difficult, and you can certainly say no if it's too hard, to put a, as part of the monthly report, to put that ratio in?
No, that wouldn't be difficult at all.
Okay, I mean, just give us an idea of where, where, where we are.
We can certainly do that. I do know that the days cash on hand is already on your monthly reports, but we can certainly add that piece as well.
And, and that might be interesting, especially as we start spending down with the capital projects. That, you'll see the impact of that from month to month, so, yeah.
And just to tag along on that, I'm, and first of all, I want to thank you for putting this presentation together. I know that it's, we've got a lot of stuff going on and, and it hasn't been that long that, that we made the proposal at the, at the board level that we would like to revisit this policy. So thank you for putting this together in what looks to be a, a short amount of time. And I was going to ask if we could also see the, the fund balance ratio on the financial reports every month. Going back to the, to slide three, I believe, so the ISB financial profile. So another big chunk of what they're looking at is the expenditure to revenue ratio. And I know that you said that we, you know, board mem, boards typically will tie the fund balance to board policy. Can you give us just a, a real brief look at what our expenditure to revenue ratio looks like? I mean, are we? I know, you know, we've, fund balance is kind of a tangible thing for us because we actually see that, even though we don't look at the ratios on a monthly basis, but how is that looked at as far as the state goes?
As far as the state goes, it's, it's pretty similar to this. It's at thirty-five percent as well. I know for us, we are at three point nine for our total. So we are, we are at the highest point for our expenditure to revenue ratio. We're at that highest rating. Now, when we start spending down some of our reserves, it may drop for a year in that particular category because we'll be spending more, our expenditures will be higher than our revenues would be for that one year. But we will likely still end up being in the top tier because the other areas will still be at the highest point. So I don't anticipate any issues, and we can certainly put together the same chart that we provided here for expenditure and revenue ratios to include that for the next board meeting, if you'd like.
That'd be great, yeah. I'm gonna do that. I appreciate that. And then going back to slide nine, which is where you have the existing versus proposed language. So as we start thinking about this, and I know that in that proposed language, instead of having, you know, a minimum of twenty percent like we have now, the proposed language looks more like a range, right? So target a fund balance between level A and level B.
Yes.
So to your knowledge, I mean, it looks like I know you pulled information from other districts. Some of, you know, there's a couple that have a a range in their policy, a couple others. They might have a range to pay. I mean, it we're looking at it just from the ISB financial profile. I guess my question is twofold. So what would we, how would we come about? Especially, I mean, it it, you know, it makes sense to, I think in my mind, to have that minimum threshold be what the state expects us to have. That's that's just in my mind. I can't speak for the rest of the board. But then how would we look at what that higher target would look like? Because as you, you know, with the next bullet point, it says if there's a consequence of the funds below fall below that minimum level. Would there also then be a directive if the funds exceed the maximum level, right? So how do we, what what? How do we go about thinking about that as we as we go forward and in considering what that new target language would look like?
That that's a great question. Um, I think that once the board has identified the amount of reserves that they plan to spend down, we can look at projections and how that impacts us to inform that conversation. I think that'll be a key, a key component. We'll also look at the low points um, to inform that decision as well. But I believe um, as part of our regular press policy review protocol, that will come, that opportunity will come a few months from now. Yes. So we'll have that extra data for you before that um, to help inform those decisions, but that data should help.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the next item on the agenda is facilities updates. Now I know that Mr. Lindholm is joining us at the presenter's table.
I think so. This is Google. This is Google. Brian probably shouldn't. Brian probably wishes he sat here. Where is it? This one. And then slideshow? Nope. So I did something wrong? So I'm not sharing right now, but that's still showing me share. I'm not sharing right now. There it is up there now.
All right. Thank you for your patience there. So uh, to start, we felt like it was important to acknowledge the level of funding that has been allocated to the approved middle school projects uh, and the potential impact of what we'll be able to afford at the elementary level. So this will have a direct impact on the information that you've seen today. Um, and then ultimately, the the elementary school recommendations that we'll plan on bringing forward to the board on December eighteenth. So if you recall, the United U forty six plan called for a total investment of up to three hundred and eighty million dollars with a hundred and seventy nine million coming from the referendum that was approved by voters and the remainder coming from reserves and other funding sources. On this page, you'll see we have almost two hundred million dollars allocated to the middle school projects. And this is in addition to the conversion of Hawk Hollow into a middle school that was approved and funded from reserves prior to the referendum passing in April. We also have a placeholder for updates that are needed to our four other existing middle schools. Canton, Eastview, Larson, and Tept. Many of these updates are smaller in scale and would likely be spread out over the next several years. This is a strategic approach as we need to ensure that our middle schools are all equipped to support our teaming model and to receive sixth graders in August of two thousand and twenty six. This ship needs to occur before we are able to execute on many of our elementary changes, including looking for opportunities to expand pre-K opportunities and possibly consolidate under enrolled schools. We can't get this transition wrong, and we need to make sure we deliver on our promise to all of our students and our families. But the bottom line is that we will be investing more in our middle schools than we'd originally anticipated after refining our plan to support the shift of sixth grade into our middle schools. This means we will likely need to be more selective in determining which elementary schools will be renovated or rebuilt. Next slide, please. So as you may recall, these were the elementary and pre-K sites that were identified as priorities to renovate, rebuild, or retire through the Unite U forty six process. Illinois Park, Washington, Lowry, McKinley, Hanover Countryside, Glenbrook, Century Oaks, and Parkwood. We've been busy investigating each of these sites in more detail with D L A Architects to affirm the initial Unite U forty six recommendations for each building. We've committed to providing recommendations to the Board of Education on December eighteenth. And those recommendations will consider our architectural findings, land availability, and the latest enrollment projections to determine the proper course of action for each of these buildings. As anyone who's done major home renovations can attest, in many cases, the cost to renovate older buildings is more expensive than new construction. So that will also be a consideration, particularly for some of our oldest elementary schools that date back to the late eighteen hundreds. Another challenge for many of our older elementary schools is that they're on very small lots which may not lend themselves to new school construction with the required green space, parking, bus drop-off zones, athletic fields. And finally, given that many of our elementary schools are under enrolled and will be even more so once we transition sixth grade to middle school, we will need to carefully consider consolidating some of our schools to operate more efficiently as a district. Next slide, please. Excuse me. So this slide presents a preliminary list of elementary projects that are based on our most recent site visits and assessments from D L A Architects. This list calls for building a new elementary school in Elgin and one in Streamwood. We have different locations that we're investigating for these new schools as we would ideally like to have a larger plot of land to assure there's ensure there's appropriate parking, bus staging, and green space to support our new schools. Many of our existing sites have challenges in these areas and some of the very challenging layouts that are not conducive to student learning. Additionally, we've identified a need for additions and renovations at multiple sites to support our elementary and early childhood needs on the west side of Elgin. These improvements would also address some of our accessibility concerns. And as a reminder, any students impacted by the changes will move to improved and modern learning, more modern learning environments. And then finally, as we showed on the middle school slide, there are updates we'd like to make to all of our elementary schools, including providing a safe and welcoming front entry. These would again need to be prioritized, budgeted, and scheduled to occur over the next several years. So please consider this only a preliminary list of possible elementary projects. We wanted to share this today mainly to give a better idea of what it may cost to address our elementary needs and how that will have a direct impact on how much we may need to draw against our reserves uh, for the last presentation that you saw. And that concludes the presentation, and we're prepared for any questions.
Board members have any questions? Ms. Khan?
Hi, so what I'm understanding how this is going to be allocated, these elementary school fifty million dollar each are being taken specifically from the bonds and the reserves. How is this being?
We we don't delineate between those funds when it comes to how these how these projects are presented. We look at the total amount.
Okay.
Um, the referend- referendum language as it was presented did not require us to spend reserves on a part on on particular projects. So we look at the big picture. We don't have to identify what we're paying for out of reserves or what we're paying for out of bond referendum. All of the projects fall under the same umbrella.
Okay, but I think I was trying to understand how we're going to be using individually the funds. I think we have, there's an additional, I'm help me if I'm wrong to understand. We were trying to get an additional bond issuance, right? Um, for the thirty two or sixty five. I can't remember. I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. The total, the total, the total promise was three hundred and eighty one million. Um, of that, a hundred and seventy nine is referendum. But all of that's included. The one seventy nine is included in the three eighty. The three eighty includes reserves and it includes the other elements that we talked about. Right now, all we focused on was the sixty two million that is that you approved already for the referendum bonds. And we're looking at what reserve, what portion of reserves we want to spend right now.
But I think you might be referring to the the conversation that we had about the working cash bonds and the thirty million that we were having, the conversation about the working cash bonds, but that's not.
We're not, that's not included in any of the information we provided right now.
Okay, this is separate.
That's on, that's on hold until next year.
Next year. And then can you go to the previous slide for me? No, the one more, sorry. The one that has the breakdown. So none of this is using anything from our capital fund or anything. This is just specifically from the bond and reserve, right? When we're looking at these three schools here um, under Unite U forty six bond issue and reserve funding.
Yes, that is from the the total pot of three hundred and eighty one million, which includes the one seventy nine referendum and and reserves and whatever other debt instruments the board chooses to utilize.
Okay, so we do have an option to use the capital fund if we have to, if we go over or something. Is that?
I guess I need clarity on what you mean by the capital fund.
That's fine.
I think you need reserves.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you have the ability to use the reserves.
I do. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, that helps. I need help on this. I'm sorry. Thank you.
No problem.
Ms. Martin?
So I I just want to confirm, you mentioned a meeting, a presentation at our December eighteenth meeting. That would be a more specific update on specific schools at the elementary we would be looking at as far as closures, rebuilds. Is that what that meeting is gonna possibly include?
Certainly which elementary buildings we would be um, targeting for for these construction projects.
Okay.
We, yes, we would have names to the schools.
Okay. The the goal would be to address those eight buildings specifically that we've referred to and we continue to refer to at that meeting.
And I would quickly add, these are the buildings we'll be, you'll be touring to. A couple of us have already toured them, but that you'll get to see those. And thank you for the talk.
Oh, no problem.
Are there any other questions from board members? So just to to clarify, and I I think, I don't know, maybe to 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 help a little bit, these are, I mean, we're looking at allocations. Not allocations. We're looking at projections of what projected costs items will cost as we move through this seven-year process or however long it's going to take. So we don't have specific allocations to each individual project. These are just projections. Like right now, if we're looking at three hundred and eighty million dollars in what we thought we would spend on construction, this is our projection of what those components would be. So there's not an allocation right now of you know, twenty million for this project is going to come from referendum bonds and twenty million is going to come from reserves. Does that, does that help a little bit?
Yeah.
So you know, we've got, we've got the three hundred and eighty million that we were anticipating spending, right? If if you look at the totals that you have here of things that of the the projections that are known for the new elementary schools, for the new middle schools, we're looking at about three hundred and forty million, right? So that gives us about forty million dollars in the to-be-determined category. Um, I just want to make sure that I'm I'm thinking of that the same way.
That's correct.
Yes. So refresh my memory, when when we first started down this road, we had some specifics of what we wanted to spend, and then there was this other, you know, kind of more nebulous updates that need to happen. The forty million is a little bit lower than what we had hoped to be able to spend for those other projects, but how much lower?
I'd like to go back and and to answer your question totally accurately, go back and and see the exact figures that were presented previously. I think probably the biggest difference is we had originally probably intended that we'd be rebuilding more elementary schools and and based on some of our latest looks at the enrollment, plus what we've spent on the middle school side, we just probably will not be able to renovate or rebuild as many of the elementary buildings. Like, that's probably the bigger difference.
Okay. So and I know that one of the, one of the things that that we we think might happen is there will be some consolidation at the elementary level. I know that that doesn't typically result in a huge cash savings for us because our money is tied up in salaries, right, for teachers. We're not, our money's not tied up in buildings per se.
We will have some of that data for you as well on the eighteenth.
Yeah, I mean, if if, you know, it it will reduce, result in some savings. So it'd be good to see what that also would entail.
I I think um, just a couple of things as reminders, and and we've shared this, we continue to share that this information both here and, you know, I'll continue to encourage all of our our uh, community members, parents, colleagues, to take a look at the Unite forty six site where we upload all of those presentations. One, one of the dynamic uh, points of data for us is is the student enrollment number. And I think when we initially started this work and the efforts, um, even being able to spend as much time as we have over the last several years, really researching and digging into that data, we didn't recognize at the time how significant that decline has been and just how quickly that is that has occurred throughout the system as well, which I think is a is a factor as we look forward to bringing those those recommendations. And we absolutely can can share with you what we identify as a realistic fixed cost per building without including teacher salaries, uh, because those are numbers that fluctuate from site to site depending on programming and depending on on a number of factors. But we we are able to to, you know, provide that, I think we about two million dollars is what we set aside as some fixed in fixed costs when we look at elementaries.
Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you for this presentation. Um, when do we expect to have the T B Ds filled in? I I know that for the elementary, that'll be contingent upon what is decided with the elementary schools, but we know what we're doing with the middle schools. So when do we expect to have cost estimates for the updates to the middle schools and then the cost estimates for the update to the um, elementary schools? Just tying that in with what Ms. Owen said about having, um, we'll have about forty two million dollars left over to do those two T V D items. When do we expect to have estimates?
Uh, I would think that we could have some updated information as it relates to that in the next few months. Now that we have our construction managers who um, do our estimating for us on board. Um, and we'll also be bringing another recommendation for an architect to you um, for first review on the eleven. So all the players are starting to fall in place, so we can um, inform those those missing pieces.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
The last item on the agenda is public comments. I do not see any one in the audience for public comment, and there have been no submissions online. So with that, I will close the meeting at five forty one P M.
Don't start this till another nineteen minutes, right? All right.